Immediate order, fellas, please rise. I ask you to permit a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. Please drive me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kamarski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor City Clerk, Treasurer, and Attorney Earl Smith.
Welcome back, Alderman Kamarski.
Thank you, Mayor, it's good to be back. It's good to be anywhere.
After a number of months and weeks ago, we weren't sure, and I want to welcome you back.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to make a couple of special presentations tonight, if I may. If Officer Mike Mathis and Sergeant Crowley would please come up. George. We have a Police Department presenting the lifesaving award to Officer Michael Mathis in Greeds. On Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, while you were working an assignment at City Hall, you responded to a report of unconscious person in the parking lot, when you arrived and found an individual unresponsive with no pulse or respiration. You immediately began performing CPR, and as a result of your efforts, the patient regained her vital signs. Paramedics arrived and transported the patient to the hospital. Your skilled response in administering lifesaving aid gave this patient a greater chance of surviving her sudden cardiac event. This award serves to acknowledge your extraordinary professionalism and dedication to duty. Sincere thanks and appreciation for your exceptional efforts. Signed by Chief. And also that Mike, obviously Mike and Jeff, along with a number of other people, responded to, as we said, the near life-taking incident with Alderman Kamarski, but just the response that everyone gave was just so great. And, you know, whether it be the police on duty that night, and also the paramedics that came and followed up, I just can't say enough about how our professionalism and our services performed. But again, Jeff, kind of the same thing. On Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, while you were working on assignment at City Hall, you responded to a report of unconscious person in the parking lot. When you arrived, you found an individual unresponsive with no pulse or respiration. You immediately began performing CPR, and as a result of your efforts, the patient regained her vital signs. Paramedics arrived and transported the patient to the hospital. Your skilled response in administering lifesaving aid gave this patient a greater chance of surviving her sudden cardiac event. This award deserves acknowledgement, acknowledges your extraordinary professionalism and dedication to duty, and sincere appreciation of the Police Department. Signed by Chief Larry Yatt.
Mayor?
No, thank you very much.
If I may?
Of course, if you may. Take a picture.
Thank you. Two words that are so insignificant for what you did.
No, nope.
Thank you from the bottom of my mending heart. And this is for you, Sergeant. This is for you.
Thank you.
And this is for Chief Yatt for their part. Thank you. We have an outstanding Police Department. I'm so fortunate to be a part of this community, and I don't ever want you to leave. So, thank you, and you will be in my prayers as long as I live. Thank you.
Thank you. We hope we never go through that again, right?
Me too.
All right, and the consent calendar, we've got approval in minutes of a City Council meeting from May 21st, 2019, and approval of payroll and voucher list for period ending May 31st, 2019. Entertainer motion to approve the consent calendar. Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Kamarski. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes. All right. Just general remarks, the 4th of July is coming up, you start to see the signs out. We've got a number of activities that are going to take place over that weekend, or Thursday, going on, so please partake in those events. Also, I'm looking to appoint Kathleen Peters to a three-year term on the Public Arts Commission. Need a motion to approve my appointment.
So move.
Move by Alderman Kamarski.
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Clerk. City Treasurer.
Thank you, no report.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Any communication? Alderman Kamarski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank all the residents, the City Council, everybody that was so kind to me when I had my cardiac event. I can't tell you the number of emails I got, flowers, cards, telephone calls, text messages, so I want to thank everybody. Everybody was just awesome. Thank you.
It's a great town.
It is, it certainly is.
Thank you, Alderman Kamarski. Anything else? Citizens wish to address the council? If not, Finance Committee? Oh, I'm sorry.
Never been here.
Okay, your name and address, please, if you would.
Mary Beth Swolfer, 12203 South 71st Court, Paleseides. I wrote to you, Mr. Mayor, last year about Zax on Tap, and I didn't hear from you and John J. Clifford. I gave it to your woman, or maybe to your wife, in the house last year. And then I called my mom one a couple times already this year, so they told me to come here, to address my concern about the noise in my house from Zax on Tap.
Okay.
I hear everything, all the music, all night long in my house with the windows and the doors closed on a summer night, so I'm asking that they don't get to play it outside.
Okay, well, we can talk to the Public Police Department about it and see if we can, you know.
No, I've already talked to the police.
No, we will do that for you.
Well, why are you going to have the police do something?
Because...
They said you gave them a permit to play that music, and I have to put up with it.
The music, there's not a permit for the music. Music is, the permit is to have the restaurant, and not to disturb the peace either, so...
Okay, so they're not allowed to play music up there?
I didn't say that. I said they're not allowed to disturb the peace, so we'll see what...
So when I called many, many times to 911 to say I could hear at my house, is that disturbing the peace?
It could be.
What do you mean it could be? Yes or no?
I'm not there, I don't know, ma'am. I'll find, I'll do some investigation on this.
What kind of, you don't have to investigate. Why are you taking my word? I've lived here for 25 years, I've never been here. Like in front of you, Mayor, so why are you asking? Why do you have to, I mean, I've asked them to come into my house. You could come to my house.
Who's them?
The police. Because that woman, Pat, last year, said I should call the police. Now you're saying you're going to investigate. John J. Clifford, what do you think?
I was informed about, I got calls over the weekend on it, from Mr. McCarthy across the street from you. And the zoning that, there's items and limitations on it, they're allowed to have entertainment and lighting up to a certain time, and I believe it was according ordinance, I have to double check it, but I believe it was not to be past 11:00 PM.
That's too late.
Well, that, this is when they changed hands on the original...
Yeah, when the cost is owned...
San Bucus, when they went over, and then went over to there, and then they had the in-between business there, there was a lot of problems, and I was up there three or four times and talked with the manager and asked him to respect the, and we talked, I talked to you and your husband over that one, when they had...
That was when cost is owned, I'm talking about Zax on Tap.
No, no, I'm giving you the history of this.
We've never, yeah, I know, I know about the history, that's great. We're talking about right now.
No, so did I, but you called me, and I'm trying to tell you...
That was last year, before this letter was sent to you.
Each and every time I went up there, each and every time I went up and talked with the manager or the lady, and I specifically...
Was this Zax on Tap?
And I specifically asked that, I introduced myself to her, and I asked, you know about the situation that was going on before they took over, before Zax took over, and I hope that we don't have a repetitive instance of that, and she told me, rest assured, we're not. That was with the noise and the motorcycles and all that stuff. As far as the lighting goes on up there, then I'll have to find it back in the original ordinance on there, but there's some limitations on lighting and music up there, and I believe Officer Jakowski went and checked, and he called me up and said there was some mention, I think it's 11 o'clock, but I'll double check for you.
I know, but I'm asking, no, I don't want it till 11. I'm up at 4:00 in the morning on Thursday and Friday, so if that plays till, and last weekend there was after 12:00 they were on, but even 11:00, I'm getting like four hours of sleep. Inside my house, I'm not lying, I'm inside my house with the doors and windows, 81 degrees.
Now here, I think it needs to be pointed out, Mayor, that it's not an ordinance that is applicable just to the businesses, it's a noise ordinance for the city. So if your neighbor was having a party, they could have music outside until 11:00 at night. If you had a party, you could do it until 11:00 at night. No ordinances are being broken.
Every single weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, throughout the summer.
But they can do it until 11:00. So what you're asking for is a change in ordinance, which that has to go through a committee and come here and be investigated, and then voted on in committee, then come to the City Council.
What about this thing that I got off the Internet? It says, "No retail of liquor licensed shall suffer quarreling, singing, fighting, or other disturbance of persons passing along the street or public square." This is in my house, I'm not even passing on the street. Disturbing the peace, I have, I've sent this to the Mayor. It's got no retailer, you could, you just can't handle them, you can't disturb a landowner, that's me, I think, right? Aren't I a landowner?
Well...
I mean, I've lived here 25 years, paying the taxes.
Okay, let me look at the ordinance. If they are violation of the ordinance, we can issue a citation to them, and it's up to a judge to adjudicate the citation.
Well, why didn't we start this last year, in 2018? How long is that going to take?
That's the procedure, ma'am.
That's the way it works, ma'am.
But why didn't you answer me on 2018?
I don't remember even getting the letter, to be honest with you.
John J. Clifford, you got it, you did get it.
I don't remember, I'm telling you.
Well, maybe you don't remember, well, that's a shame.
Is that the letter you gave, last year?
July 28th, 2018.
The letter, the letter that you hand-delivered to my house?
Yeah, with all the ordinances on it, and no one responded to me. And I would like to ask that, too, why does nobody respond to a letter? I never got your letter.
The only email that I've seen in, of last year that had to do with Zax on Tap came from a different, it was not you, it came from a resident on the other side of Harlem, and it was, it was, the complaint was a nuisance, it wasn't Zax being a nuisance, they were being a nuisance because they, they just didn't like Zax being open.
No.
I've not seen yours.
I don't care if they're open, let them do the karaoke and the band inside the building. I don't want it up on the roof, that's all I'm asking.
All right, I will look into it.
I mailed it to 7607 West College Drive, is that where your office is?
You know it is.
Okay, well, there we go.
Okay.
I don't know if it is because you didn't answer my letter. You know, I said, "Attached our documents, please call me ASAP, C.C. Alderman, John J. Clifford."
Okay, I'll track it down.
No, I addressed it, I went up and talked to people a couple of times.
Well, it didn't work, though, I'm, that's why I'm here.
I asked them to be courteous to it, and if they got to a point, it got tonight, and I specifically said, "At night, sound has a way of traveling further than it does during the day." It's a fact. Now, I asked them, "When it gets dark, say around night, could you tone it down? It has to be off by a certain time, and respect the residents of there," and the lady there assured me she would do it. Officer Jakowski and the shift commander went there that night, Bill called me, was it yesterday, and investigated it, and he said, "According to the report, that the shift commander," whoever that might have been, "went there at the time and didn't hear anything, or to be that intrusive at the time, and it was to be shut off." She said, "By ordinance, she had it to 11:30, but she was shutting it off at 11:00 to be..."
And the policeman came to my house at 11:05. Yeah, she did turn it off at 11:00, and he came to my house...
Well, that's what he told me.
Many, many, you know, a little bit, I love the police, but it was well after I called them, and then at 11:05, he goes, "I don't hear anything, Mrs. Swolfer."
Well, then we'll just have to keep an eye on it past 11:00, 11:00, right now...
No, Mayor, I want you to just stop them from playing music, karaoke, and live band on the roof.
I can't.
Why not?
They're allowed by ordinance to do that.
What ordinance?
They have the ability to do it, to run a business. I can't just, because you want it to shut down, shut it down.
But they're disturbing me inside my house.
Then file a police report, and we, they'll go to court.
We'll go outside and get and talk to her, ask her, but right now, according whatever was written in the ordinance, I don't have it in my...
So the ordinance says you can play music as loud as they want and disturb me, is that correct?
No, they can't do that.
He's saying it is, though, they haven't, there's an ordinance. What's the big deal?
If they're disturbing you, call the police to disturb you.
I call, this is, come on, let's not call, I called the police many times, I'm not going to call them every day. They have a lot to do, they're saving Mrs. Kamarski.
All right, I'll talk to the Police Department about it tomorrow.
They shouldn't be called over music inside my house.
I'll talk to them tomorrow.
Yes, please, stop it, for the whole summer, I don't want it again. I did last year all summer. You know, and I'm up at 4:00 in the morning, so that really agitates you when you get four hours of sleep. It's, you know, that's not good for your health, either, having, like, literally the music banging inside my living room, literally. I know it was Karen's party, I know this, I know that, because all the singing is in my living room. And it's just ridiculous, so it's not acceptable.
I don't think you should leave here thinking that the music is going to stop for the summer, because there's an ordinance that allows them to do it. So even if we investigate it, even if we agree 100% with you, it cannot happen immediately.
Can I have a copy of that ordinance?
An ordinance has, there's a noise ordinance.
I know, I have a different one than you have, it doesn't say anything about that.
There's a noise ordinance, what we're saying is, that even if it was your, even if it was your neighbor, they're allowed to do stuff until 11:00 at night, or whatever they, and that's why they came to you at 11:05 and said there's not a problem, because the ordinance says the music can play until 11:00.
Are you going to give me a copy of that ordinance?
Am I going to what?
Give me a copy of that ordinance, please.
Sure, we'll get it to you. That's not a problem. Yeah, we'll get it to you tomorrow.
They said the reason why the music is so loud, because Mayor Straz gave them a permit or license to play it.
It's got nothing to do with the volume. It has nothing to do with, they have a liquor permit, is all they have.
Mayor Straz couldn't have gave them a permit without the consent...
So they don't have a music permit?
There's no music permit.
So then they can't play music.
It's a noise ordinance, it's not a business ordinance, it's a noise ordinance.
I have the noise ordinance right here.
Yes.
It says you cannot disturb a landowner in their home, that's me.
After 11:00.
No, it doesn't say after, there's nothing about time here.
All right, I'll get you the one that says, gives you the times, okay?
Huh?
I'll get one, a copy tomorrow.
I don't want, what else are you going to do after that?
I'm going to talk to the Police Department about enforcing the noise ordinance that we have.
Till 11:00 PM?
Right.
Well, no, I don't want that, I don't want the music at all.
Well, that's it, that's the ordinance we have, ma'am.
So from like 9:00 to 11:00, it's booming in my house, Mr. Mayor. And literally, I'm not exaggerating.
We can ask them...
I've been to Zax on Richland, I've eaten in the restaurants, I, like, go to everyone's restaurant, everyone's place of business, 25 years I've lived here. I'm not making this up, it's literally in my house.
We can talk to them about cutting it down a little bit for you, we can, see what we can do.
Why can't they just turn it off and play it inside?
Because it's part of their business.
Well, why'd you even let them make a roof? Okay, let's go back then, let's go back in history. Why is it even a rooftop?
It's old history, it's done.
It's not, you're so disrespectful, that's not even nice.
That's not true, ma'am.
You're so disrespectful.
That's not true.
So disrespectful.
You're not.
No, I'm not, I'm very disrespectful.
Okay.
I actually came here because the police told me to.
We'll talk to Zax, and I'll get you a copy of the ordinance, as I said.
Are you going to be home tomorrow? I have Billy Comby explain it to you with the report.
No, I don't want any explanation, well, you already have it by the police, I want you to stop the music.
Well, it's going to be hard to do that, because it's legally been written down as a condition of when they open a business, and that's going way back to San Bucus, when they came up with the...
When you guys let them put something on the roof, I think because it's on the roof. Why can't they play it like on the ground, maybe? Seriously, why don't they, let's try karaoke on the ground, and their bands, like in the back there, let's try that first, and say, "Not on the roof." Would you do that for me?
I can't do that, I can't justify, you know, I mean, I can't stop them from doing what they're allowed to do. We have an ordinance that lets them do that, but I can at least talk to them about trying to cut it back for you. Sound.
All right, who's coming to my house tomorrow with that ordinance?
I'll email it to you, if you give me your email address.
I can have Billy Comby talk to you.
Who's Billy?
The Deputy Chief that...
No, I don't want a policeman in my house, I want you, John J. Clifford, you come over to my house with it. That would be nice.
What do you want me to do? I can't tell you anymore, and I've been telling you here.
I know, they give me a copy of the ordinance.
I'll get you the ordinance.
Don't bother the policemen, I mean, that's so silly.
I'll get you the ordinance of the zoning, when it was first done, that you digged out of what was allowed, and told at the time, that's the hours that they had the music, the hours with the television, the hours with the music, the rooftop.
And Mr. K., you said that I could blast music until 11:02, is that correct?
I didn't say anything about blasting music.
Well, that's what they're doing.
I said, if, I've been, I've been, I've been to Zax 50 times, I've been to Zax on Tap 50 times. They're not blasting it even when you're sitting there.
You've never, you haven't been in my living room, literally.
I'm just telling you, I'm using the neighbors as an example. If your neighbor had a pool, and they're blasting...
No, my neighbor's Zax on Tap, apparently, and you're letting him play music.
I'm saying, if it was your next-door neighbor, and they had a pool outside, and they were having a party, there's a noise ordinance. It's the same ordinance for your neighbor and for you.
So you could play it till 11:00?
Right.
At what volume?
A normal volume, which it is.
No, Zax on Tap is not normal, it's in my living room with the windows closed, why don't you understand that? That can't be a normal volume.
There's an ordinance, so, I mean, we've all said here, the ordinance needs to be changed, if you want, if you want to effect change, then you've got to go through the steps of changing the ordinance.
Well, I can't change the ordinance, because I don't really know what it says, because the one I give doesn't say anything about 11:00 PM.
Alderman Clifford's going to bring you one tomorrow.
It says, "Do not disturb any landowner."
Alderman Clifford's going to...
What do you think about this one? Is this one I made up?
No.
What about this one? Well, what about that?
I said, Alderman Clifford's going to bring you one tomorrow, he said he would. I'll have...
A landowner could place property to any lawful use as far as he does not deprive the adjoining owner right of enjoyment of his or her property. In my living room.
That's a, you're reading from the general ordinances, but there's also a section when we renew the liquor license, that certain restrictions...
Yes, I understand that the liquor license is very important, since they're probably the only business that is open in the city.
I don't have it on me, I have to get access to it and make a copy for you.
I have it, specific nuisances, brewery, to locate, establish, or maintain any brewery in the city, and that's what Zax on Tap is.
It's not a brewery.
No retail or liquor license under provision shall suffer any loud or boisterous talking or obscene or profound language, quarreling, singing, fighting, or other disturbances of persons passing along the street. I mean, that's, this is in my living room, I'm not even complaining when I'm on the street.
All right, Alderman Clifford said he'd bring it to you tomorrow. Amen?
I'll get a copy of the pertaining ordinances, and I'll bring them down to you. Mr. McCarthy called me, I was at the doctor's having this cancer thing taken off my face when he called, and I said, "As soon as I get through with the procedure, I will get there and come to you." I didn't know you were coming, and I, you could have come and just called me, or came on my phone.
I went to your house, John J. Clifford, please don't say that. Don't be condescending or sarcastic. You know I was at your house.
I've been down there three, four, five, every time you...
You don't come to my house when I have to sign a petition for your relatives, no.
I'm not going to get in an argument with you.
I will argue.
Well, you can argue, why not?
Because I think you're making up a story now, I was not, you didn't, I haven't seen you since you opened.
What I'm saying is, each, each every time that I heard from you or your neighbors, and you can talk to the Evits, the Macartys, everyone...
What about me? You weren't at my house.
I went to your house, too.
No?
Yes, I did. I talked to your husband out there, and he's doing his gardening, and I said, "I'm going on my way to talk to the people."
That was before Zax on Tap.
No, no, each and every time I've responded to that, and each and every time I'll continue to do that, I will get you the pertaining ordinances to that, to what the restrictions on it, and what they're allowed to and not allowed to do. And I'll ask Billy to accompany when I come to your house, so you have it all there.
So you're just telling me they're allowed to blast the music where I could hear it in my living room, that's all I need to know, Mayor.
Let's get you, yes, let's get you the ordinance tomorrow.
Well, that's terrible, that is so terrible.
Well, when it came, when they did the provisions of that, it could have been under the liquor license, that's a general noise and nuisance, like...
Well, notice that, Mrs. Swolfer, we're having a meeting from the liquor license about Zax on Tap, and they're going to play music, what do you think about that?
Each and every time they come in, a new owner, they always have a liquor, liquor hearing.
Well, you didn't tell me that, John J., you didn't say, "Before the mayor gives them a permit, you want to come over, because it's going to be having music and karaoke and live bands."
Well, I don't go around house to house telling everybody that.
There's only four houses on, there's only three, actually, there's three houses on the street.
Well, what do you want me to do?
All right, Jack, she'll bring it, she'll bring it to you tomorrow, okay?
And then what? You're going to bring me the ordinance?
Why don't you read it first, and then we can, if you want to...
And then I got to come back again?
Call me in, and I'll meet with you.
Are you going to pick up the telephone if I call you?
Yes, I will, ma'am.
the liquor license, that's a general noise and nuisance, like...
Well, now it said, Mrs. Swolfer, we're having a meeting from the liquor license about Zax on Tap, and they're going to play music, what do you think about that?
Each and every time they come in, a new owner, they always have a liquor, liquor hearing.
Well, you didn't tell me that, John Jack, you didn't say, before the mayor gives them a permit, you want to come over, because it's going to be having music and karaoke and live bands.
Well, I don't go around house to house telling everybody that.
There's only four houses on, there's only three, actually, there's three houses on the street.
Well, what do you want me to do?
All right, Jack, she'll bring it, you'll bring it tomorrow, okay?
And then what? You're going to bring me the ordinance?
Why don't you read it first, and then we can, if you want to...
And then I got to come back again?
Call me in, and I'll talk, meet with you.
Are you going to pick up the telephone if I call you?
Yes, I will, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, John J. Clifford.
Any other citizens? Finance, Solomon McGrogan.
I got one.
Oh, sure, that's all right.
You might want to stay here for this one, it's the same, same thing here, it's the same room. My name's Ted Ewing, E.W.I.N.G., reside at 12924 South Forest View, been here about four years now. I'm going to read the ordinance for you out loud, 71.067, noisy vehicles, unnecessary noise. It shall be unlawful to operate a vehicle which makes unusually loud or unnecessary noise. It shall be unlawful to operate a vehicle in such a manner as to cause or produce unnecessary loud, raucous, excessive, or unusual noise by the racing of the motor, by lack of a muffler, or use of a muffler cut out, by tire friction upon rapid turning or weaving, by spinning of the vehicles from a standing or slow-moving position produced by sudden unnecessary motor acceleration, or by continuous unnecessary sounding of a horn or other service device. So when I read that, when I hear unnecessary, this isn't a diesel truck coming to my neighborhood, and I had to call the cops on Sunday night at 9:00 for at least the seventh or eighth time in two years, everyone, nothing has been done with this young man in my neighborhood with not a diesel, diesel truck going to work, not some operating piece of machinery to a construction site, it's a loud sports car with unnecessary noise. Every time he's been called in the last two years, nobody's ever talked to him, no report of him talking or anything. I had to have Mr. Delaney at my house on Sunday night, and I think that he was the first-person police officer to actually make contact with the young man, and I actually went over there and witnessed the conversation. So this isn't me picking on some diesel piece of machinery, a backhoe or anything else, it's a loud sports car with unnecessary noise, it's modified.
Okay.
It's not towing cars, it's not towing machinery, landscaping equipment, roofing construction, it's a loud sports car. Now, I haven't heard it in the last two days, so I'm, hopefully, it's going to stop, but it took someone from the police department, two years, to actually make contact with them.
I apologize for that, citizens.
Thank you.
It should not have taken that long. Any other citizens? Now, Finance.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Public Safety, Alderman McGovern.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Municipal Grounds and Property, Alderman Bassel.
Yes, mayor, I have three items on the agenda. Item number eight, motion to approve the purchase of landscaping option A for the entrance of City Hall from JGS Landscape Architects in the amount not to exceed $19,375.
Moved by Alderman Bassel, second by Alderman Kamarski, discussion?
I have some, excuse me, I have some questions on this, ma'am. So I went out to the grounds, and I went out there with Adam to figure out what we're talking about here, and we're talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, the entrances to the driveway off of College Drive.
Mm-hmm, the one entrance.
Oh, excuse me, correct, the two sides of the entrance.
And then the quarter, corner...
On 76th Avenue, and the entrance to the munis, or the building, department. So some of my questions are, so I went out there and I walked the grounds, and the grounds looked very nice. So I question if this is a need or a want, this $19,000, because my concern is, to be fiscally prudent, addressing some of the needs that we have in, especially in my ward, a pretty obvious one is the path around Memorial Park when it rains, it floods and it stays flooded by the power field, by, by the swing set and everything like that. So $19,000 to spend on landscaping, I have a concern that, that this is an unnecessary spend, and especially given the condition of the grounds currently.
Who's that grounds?
So that's my concern, and I'd like a roll call, vote on it.
Sure, will be, yes, it will be. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Key.